Everybody got a chance to look at them? Sure. Because we'll call the meeting in order and the first thing we'll do is just look at the minutes from last time. And if everybody is in favor of approving them, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I suppose we take a roll call on that? How do we do this?
Yeah. Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Hafner. Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Bob Conway.
Sure.
Then I guess we might as well kind of get started here and call a public hearing to order here. Would you care to read the notice?
Yes. Please take notice that an application has been made by Carrie Ruffridge of 1901 County 8 Spring Grove for a conditional use permit to change the use of an existing building into a non-farm dwelling on less than 40 acres in an agricultural district in Spring Grove Township on the following premises. Said applicant standing and making application is the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota at 5:00 PM on Thursday, September 23rd, 2021. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at 304 South Marshall Street, Caledonia, or emailed to myself and must be received by Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Advertised on September 8th of 2021.
Just kind of tell us what is being done? If you want to come forward and just kind of speak into the light?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just a built a building last year for my tractor and car and a shop.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission? Mr. Ruffridge?
How big is the shed?
The shed is total of 32 by 48.
And that was constructed as a note building for the farm or?
Yes.
Can you address where like what you're doing for a while? You're doing a full drain field then?
I would like to.
Okay.
There's been some splits to this parcel, is that true?
There was one, I bought two, I bought three parcels.
Okay, and what's what's the final size of the lot when you have done?
That lot is, was per the description there, so cash, my farm's dead still. But eventually if that is sold, it will be 8.65.
I don't know if you received this.
I just got it right before I came.
Okay. Just looking at the letter from the neighbor, it stated that concern about building being too close to the property line.
It was, that's not true. It was measured by your county officer.
Approximately how far was it?
I don't remember exactly. 50.
Okay. Okay.
Gravel. Correct, and I have a property that goes side of gravel up too, but I think it's a center line of gravel. Yes. One bedroom. Yes. Probably just studio. All open.
If there's not, the septic system, can you talk about that a little bit more?
I'm not a septic person, but I contacted Matt Swenson, who does that and licensed contractor. Felt like soils were going to be okay for a drain field.
So it won't be just a holding tank?
No, that's not what I want.
Okay.
I'd like to have little deals. Legit work. Water. And we got a good spot for it.
Is the shop just like a personal shop or?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm not a real farmer.
Okay.
So you won't have oil and things draining down into the septic system too?
Absolutely. I'm a local 300er.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I'll just make a note that that's something that wasn't in your board packet, but maybe it's relevant to the comment and then if you have response, you can. So he did receive, in 2002, he received a permit to build a sort of install a trailer and then build a house. But it did say on there if it's not, if the permit structure is in place within a year or that that had to be placed within a year, so that is presumed to be expired. Because all that's been there is a, it looks like an RV since that point. And which is also consistent with the fact we didn't issue an address point out there until last fall. So nobody appeared to be living there until that time. So.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the pamphlet on page two. Item 29.15, be the second paragraph. Well, when units prohibited a garage tent trailer. At any time, is that pertinent to this case?
So what we'll end up doing is essentially another zoning application with, there would be no fee attached since the structure is already up, but we'll change the use from an egg building or change it from an egg building into a dwelling. So it'll be a shells, I guess.
Okay, so that can be addressed.
I brought that up. That's why I read it right before I came.
Yeah. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
So at least we'll change it's on record, it would be a dwelling now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for that.
If you have no further questions, maybe we could ask for comments from the public at this time. So you wanted to just return to your seat for now and then we can ask. Any comments from the public? That's not good.
My name is Dennis Dobbs, we are land neighbors. And we just had a few things that we were concerned about. We got this letter. I feel like it's about the situation and all of a sudden we come up with a. We got a letter, but I guess it was beforehand, there was a. A barn that was put on there before this.
And last fall, there was a building that was permitted or.
Okay, yeah, we never got any information on it. We're the only land neighbor right there next to them and we got no information on this. And generally, from our neighborhood, we get information all the time. Hey, this is being put up, this is being put up, what are the regulations and so forth? And we're allowed the same things we're doing today, you know, to voice our opinions and so forth. And generally, we had no problems on local grid, but we had no notification of that one being put up. And we're wondering what's going on here? And we were wondering, and this all started way back in 2001, when he had a building permit and he put this RV on here. And then it got switched over to this commercial building. And now he's got to change that to an apartment. And we're wondering, is this going to be a continuing cycle where we're changing from changing to changing? And what is going on here? Is he going to change it from a one bedroom apartment? He's going to get, since he's going to rezone now, he's going to change that to something else? And what pressures is this going to cause on land? You know, is it's going to change the sewer system? What we're wondering is what's going on here? And what next can come from this? What we're talking about is to, I'm just listening here, and the water. We're wondering where the water is coming from, what is the source? And is there permit needed? I don't think there is need for the water source.
Not through the county.
It isn't, okay. I was wondering if there's some sort of regulations because that on our neighborhood. Seems like we've got regulations all over the place.
I think that. Doesn't the health department take care of like wells?
Yeah.
They all get inspected.
We don't manage anything with wells. I think it's all under state jurisdiction, so I guess it's an assumption, but that I assume that the driller has to file all that paperwork with the correct.
Yeah, so that would be Larson. Do the well, right?
Okay, so we were just kind of wondering about that too. Is, you know, where is this going to hurt? It's going to be a long line from some other water sources, is this going to be a well? Or what's going to happen here? And the property that on, you know, it's right in.
I think it's too close to our property line personally.
It's, well, here, it wasn't continued. Film a picture of where it is now.
And if he's going to put a septic in and a well and have this building, he's going to be very close to our property.
He should.
Yeah.
Setbacks for the drain field by 10 feet, I think.
Yeah, and then this, yeah, setbacks for this.
I was just kind of wondering, you know, with.
It's actually less.
So where would your property line be on this picture?
Where that there is an agricultural field up there.
Actually, I might need you to sit back here if you're going to say a lot, just so.
We should see a cornfield back there or a soybean field back there.
That's my turn.
As so forth, that's the location there. I think our main concern is it's right where its location is, you know? How do you drill a well in that location there and put in a sewer in that location in that same area there without being of some sort of danger to somebody?
How much land do you own in front of the house on the other side of the field?
The well was directly in front of the building.
In front of is towards the road? In front of is towards the road? The front of the building is where the three doors are and the bobcat is sitting.
Correct, and the septic will be south. Or you roll back.
Septic's got to be 50 feet from your well, correct?
Yeah.
And actually, yeah.
And we, that's part of the design.
We're just kind of wondering about these situations, you know? What we found in past circumstances where we used to live, people put this stuff up, they just assumed this is going to be buttered right and all of a sudden, they found out, hey, things changed. And they had problems and some gouties came in.
That's why we're going through this process.
But in the past, like I say, I have encountered where we used to live where they kind of just, oh, we'll just pass this along, so forth. I never.
So the.
Nothing against you, but just.
Excuse me, but with the questions you've come up, they've been addressed as far as the water source is going to be a well. It's going to be 50 feet from the new septic tank, which is going to be tested and designed by a contractor, both the well and the septic. The well will be tested by the state. So what are the questions you have?
Well, that's basically, and then the erosion on there.
The grade is is less enough that it won't cause any erosion issues.
Okay.
12%.
Okay, that's one thing we were kind of concerned, is there a control plan in place? Because, you know, this is running down toward the crack down. And you want to make sure that's safe, because.
It's a good. Sure.
That's what, we're just here just to find, get some answers.
Yeah.
The building permit, I guess we kind of just have discussed that. When people pull just building permits, that's not anything that we notify neighbors for. It's when we do the situations like this where conditional use, interim use for some kind of, or variants. So I'm guessing where you live, there's probably large enough feedlots that any kind of construction they do, maybe would require some kind of notice and that's why you have gotten that to pass.
Now, our main concern was, okay, are these things being put into place? Are they going to be followed up with?
We answered your question.
Yeah. And make sure that in the near future, such rules are kept on. So like I say, we're the neighbors, we never knew, I've never been through this before. At seven years of age, I've never gone through anything like this of this exposed nature. And we're just trying to wonder what is going on here with the situation, since we weren't always well informed. I was just too well informed on it, so just want to make sure that.
Well, thanks for coming to the meeting because that's why we're here is to answer your questions for the neighbors.
And there'll be an erosion control plan, right Amelia?
Um, you know, we normally do require one with a dwelling, but this is a, being it's existing, it's a problem. Dishes.
The only erosion would be for building the drain field.
But yeah, so.
True, septic system and the well won't be much erosion, I wouldn't think.
And the roof, square footage of the roof, which is, it's flat enough here with where it will come and rose.
Yeah. We've had that situation where our neighbors, they come up to us and says, well, where we live halfway between. Our neighbor, our new neighbors, they have all substantial roach situation. And we've been contacted, we've been close contact with them, and excellent that way. We've been no problem that way. But now, we like to keep, and our, like I say, this is not where we live here. We live in every place and we're well notified, I have been there and got to keep track of everything. This is like a big question onto us.
Is it been answered?
I think it has for me, I don't know. Fine, yeah, like I said, joining is just to follow up.
That's what we're doing here tonight. Yep, we're doing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tell me this and what's going on. Appreciate it.
Better to discuss it beforehand.
Right.
Yes, because I thought, like I said, I used to live above two cities and it's just. They made a lot of mistakes and that's going to be a very difficult legal process. Everyone can hear you up there.
Sure.
And we're going to do. Okay.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the application? Want to go through the findings effect at this time?
Yes. Do you guys want to take any bypass?
The other nine, 12, and 14, if somebody wants to make a motion, then we could. Second to that?
Second.
I suppose we do a roll call and make sure it's all good.
Yeah, Greg Myrie. Rich Shield.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
And Bob Conway.
Yes.
All right, so we'll start the findings. Number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Staff analysis says that this proposal meets the density limitations required for the agricultural protection district in the land use plan in Houston County zoning ordinance. Do we want to do a group?
Well, let's see. Unless there's a discussion or further thought on this, all those in favor of item number one, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That one carries.
Two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. A staff analysis is that a CUP is required to construct a single family dwelling in the agricultural district.
Any further discussion on number two? If not, all those in favor of number two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade water quality of the county. The applicant plans to have a septic professional install a holding tank. Which I guess now is, can be corrected to a full septic system.
Seems like he's got that underway, so any other discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three is good.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. The exterior of the structure will not change, so the quantity of water runoff will be no different than the current use.
Any further discussion on number four? All those in favor of number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Five, that the soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis says its soils meet the non-farm dwelling standards and are adequate to accommodate a septic system.
If everybody agrees with number five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Six, that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis is that the applicant will hire a licensed septic professional to complete the septic design and install it.
If everybody agrees with the staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six carries?
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis says that this is an existing site with utilities and an access road. Any new utility cost will be the responsibility of the applicant.
If everyone agrees with the staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven carries?
Seven, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis is that an eight acre parcel was all which should provide adequate off-street parking and loading space for residential property.
Everyone agrees with the staff analysis for number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm really curious.
Nine, so 10, that the conditional use will not be injuriously used in enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, surrounding properties are residential or tillable acreage. An additional dwelling unit will not influence the surrounding uses or other residential properties.
If everyone agrees with staff analysis, number 10, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 carries?
11, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. The surrounding properties are rural residential as most other surrounding quarter quarters have been developed. Any surrounding vacant ground is recreational or agricultural and any additional dwelling unit will have no impact.
Everyone agrees with the staff analysis, number 11, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 carries, we skipped number 12.
13, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. And this request meets the density limitation requirement for the agricultural protection district.
All those that agree with staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 13 carries?
We're skipping 14, so 15, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. A non-farm dwelling should not negatively affect the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare.
Everyone agrees with number 15, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 15 carries? And do you want to read the recommendations or?
Yes, so I did, it is going to be a little different than what you have in print. The recommended language is that to recommend that the Houston County Board approve the conditional use application to change the use of an existing building into a dwelling on less than 40 acres in an agricultural protection district with the following conditions. One, that the permit shall comply with federal, state and local laws and regulations. And two, that the county may enter into the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules and ordinances.
Does anyone feel it's necessary to include something for an erosion control plan in the conditions or how we do?
I asked about that, but I don't know, I mean, buildings, yeah, the septic system, I don't think would cause any problem.
And he's not building, no, buildings are tearing up dirt or anything around there, I wouldn't think. And the slope isn't very steep there. It says holding tank, he's going to put a septic system in.
Yeah. In one of the findings or?
Yeah. It was in number three.
Well, at this point, if somebody wanted to recommend approval of this with the conditions, want to make a motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion, recommend approval with the two, two conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, we'll do a roll call.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Wait, or Rich Shield.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Bob Conway.
Yes.
All right, so motion carries. We will submit the findings to the, it goes to the Board of Commissioners for final approval and that'll be on October 5th. And then, once that is complete, we'll just do your change of use permit. You have, you should have one on there already, because they're not assigned. Yeah, I think we took care of that last year, but we can check on that.
Well, that concludes the hearing, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks, Dennis.
Glad you came.
Thanks.
You also.
While you guys are here, you stole ones, right? We, I was going to ask these guys, we, you're the only ones we have for October. And with Thanksgiving and everything in November, everything would kind of overlap. So we were looking at November 4th instead of October 28th, I think it was. Is, would that be all right with you guys if it works for everyone else to just push that hearing back a week? Okay. Okay. Yeah, we can talk about it later, I didn't know if you guys are going to take it off, so might as well catch everybody out once. But all right, I'll let you know what we decide. Thanks. All right.
Well, I guess it says on the paper, it's 5:20, we're supposed to start this thing, so we're six minutes late. So we're going to go to the next hearing, which is for the Ross application.
Please take notice that an application has been made by Josh Ross, 6752 State 44, Caledonia, for a conditional use permit for an accessory building in the residential district in Union Township on the following premises in the Ross subdivision, Lot 1, Block 1. Said applicant standing and making application is that it's the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room in Caledonia at 5:20 on Thursday, September 23rd, 2021. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at 304 South Marshall Street or emailed and must be received by Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Comments in regard to the petition received by the state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. This is advertised on September 8th of 2021.
So if the applicants want to just come forward and kind of tell us what's going on?
Yeah, if you could just come up here, our recording devices with the mics and the camera and everything, we'll need you in front of the. Set up our recording devices with the mics and the, and the camera and everything, we'll need you in front of the camera.
You just need to know what, what the.
Just kind of give us a rundown.
Give us a rundown, what you're doing.
Basically, I'd like to build a garage shed where you can look all behind the house, thirty-six by seventy-two for boat, third vehicle, lawn tractor. Something like that, get it all of the garage.
Ohio.
Fourteen foot side doors, ten foot doors.
It's going to be up behind your house.
Yep. Yep, I'd like to start it basically where the edge of the concrete kind of stops over that kind of hill, but.
Two colors here, these are optional.
Yeah, I'd like to put it into green, it's the first option, so I can fast grade into it. Green actually won't work, I can put it with a wrap.
Let's take seventeen.
It was kind of, it was designed initially because you were looking at a variance request, but I didn't realize when we were talking at first that this is actually residential and so his setbacks are less. And he will meet his property land setbacks, but then he threw the wrench in, in the plan when he asked to go over fifteen hundred square feet. So that's why the conditional use became necessary.
Makes sense to build it big enough, I suppose that's what you're up to, right? This photo on page three. Now, there's two sets of lot lines, which, why are there two sets?
So that is mine. Beacon actually shows the blue lines, but when I mapped it out, and beacon's oftentimes not correct. When I mapped it out and I also verified it with the surveyor's office, the red lines were what we got as correct property lines and also based upon the survey. And so that's where the setbacks, I had those numbers in there, those were all measured from the correct property.
Red lines, okay. So the setback shouldn't be an issue at all, you're far enough away from everybody. Any more questions of the applicant?
Oh, if you could find a good electrician in that for the project.
I did receive kind of one inquiry into it, but that person did not submit a formal comment then. Must not have had an issue.
Was this a church before?
Well, that, that's where we are, we're down on.
Kingdom Hall.
Oh, I know where we are.
So that's why you guys had to rezone the residential and order to cut a second dwelling.
Just a question, did you have to sign a covenant or anything?
Just guarantees me to the gates.
Two or four.
Yes, for donations.
Well, I guess as far as I'm concerned, it seems to make pretty good sense, you know, as far as, it just needs a bit of.
Use, use a building, main thing.
Do we need to update this policy before we grant the accept the condition use permit, or how does that, how's that, how do we do that? As far as the square footage?
In the notice?
You propose a, a new policy for the zoning ordinance? Less than two hundred square feet?
That's.
No permit required and so on?
So when we come across a situation where the ordinance isn't as clear as it should be, we just draft a policy so that we can apply the rule consistently moving forward. And so that policy's already been drafted and we utilize it and when we come to make up or when we make an ordinance change, we'll probably look at clarifying the language. But it's just kind of used as a tool for us in the office.
We don't have, officially approve it as a board, okay? Any other questions right now? I think we can kind of let you guys have a seat back there again, unless you like sitting there, you can sit there too.
No, I'm back over there.
Any more discussion on it before we go to findings effect or?
No.
So I can just go on to the findings then.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to bypass eight, nine, twelve, fourteen, as I do not apply. All those in favor, we'll go through a roll call.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Ed Haml.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Bob Conway.
Yes.
Alright, so started the findings. Number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. The land use plan generally encourages building in, buildings in areas that are already developed. The applicant has taken a structure that was formerly a church to use as a dwelling would not like to continue to improve the property by adding an additional accessory structure.
All those in favor of that staff analysis, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious?
Two, that the applicant demonstrates the need for the proposed use. The applicant identifies that he has a need to store larger equipment such as a boat and tractor and he will meet the garage door size requirements found in the Houston County zoning ordinance.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That the proposed, three is that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. This proposal does not identify any pollution potential that could degrade water quality.
All those that agree with number three staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious?
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis is that it is presumed this property takes on a majority of the water from the surrounding hillsides and that the parking lot was designed to direct that flow. This proposal should not increase runoff and be located so it does not impede natural flow patterns.
I do have a question on this. The valley behind you, does that come towards the new building then? Does the water on the rain, will that hit the back of the building?
Actually, from standing facing the highway, the left property line, there's actually a fairly good ditch. Okay. Really rain, sorry to get some water come down there. But everything is basically right where that red line kind of goes off the personal block, there's a pretty good ditch.
I just wanted to just not think about that.
Yep. So everything's actually off, the ditch, everything all stays the same, it's just off to the side.
It'd be east of the shed then.
Correct.
Everybody that agrees with the staff analysis of number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis says soils are silt long with slopes be, being the main limitation. However, slopes of the side are still under eighteen percent. Structure should be designed to conform to the natural slope of the land.
Everybody agree with number five staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number five carries?
Six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis is that there will be no wastewater generated with this proposal.
All those that agree with number six staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six carries?
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. This is an existing site, all utilities, roads etc. are present. Any new facility need will be the responsibility of the applicant.
All those that agree with the staff analysis for number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven carries?
Eight and nine are not applicable. So ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis is that the surrounding property is bluff land, residential or tillable acreage. An additional accessory structure will not be injurious to those uses.
All those that agree with the staff analysis number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number ten carries?
Eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis is an accessory, structures are allowable in the residential district and since this property is surrounded by the egg district, a larger accessory structure will not be out of place with other properties in the vicinity.
All those that agree with the staff analysis number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eleven carries?
All is not applicable. Thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. The surrounding areas within the agricultural protection district in this proposal will be consistent with uses and structures found within that district, but will meet residential standards.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number thirteen carries?
Fourteen is not applicable. Fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Analysis says that this proposal has no impacts to the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare.
All those that agree with the staff analysis number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number fifteen carries? And you want to read the conditions again too?
Yeah, do we have a motion for the findings?
Well, let's make a motion to approve the findings.
I make a motion that we approve the findings.
Second. Roll call.
That's Wayne.
Yes.
Um, Bob Conway.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Ed Haml.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yep.
So I guess I, the motion or recommended motion here would be to recommend of the Houston County Board that approval of the conditional use application to build an accessory building in the residential district with the following conditions. One, that the permittee shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. And two, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules and ordinances.
Would someone care to make a motion for approval of the? Second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded, so roll call.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Ed Haml.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Rich Shield.
Yes.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Bob Conway.
Yes.
So all are in favor. I guess the next steps then is that this goes to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. That meeting will be on October fifth then, and once they make a decision there, then we'll get that building permitted. Right.
Hey, we finished early. We're getting good at this. I know, I think you press your questions already.
Does anybody have other business to bring before the board tonight or any discussion on things coming up?
I guess all I had was just that question on if you guys minded pushing the date back to like November fourth. For, and then that would combine October's and November's meetings. If that works for everybody.
So that would, we'd be hearing like four, five different applications?
All we have right now is one conditional use application for the, for the month of October. So that's why I thought maybe we could try to combine, just because Thanksgiving and Christmas throw everything off and they push them up a week, so we end up kind of overlapping in our end anyway, overlapping hearings and we don't have that much.
I'd recommend meeting at five like early rather than seven. So if there is here for, they come up in November, for example, we'd have time to take care of it.
Okay. Yeah, and then I guess if we go with early November, what we probably end up doing, I think it's, right now it's like the third week in December, but we can, to, I don't know if anybody travels.
We go like the tenth or the fifteenth in November, so that way if you had some early applications, we could get them in yet or not?
Well, then I was going to go with like the second week in November, but it ends up being Veterans Day this year. And so that's why we either go with the eighth, the fourth or the eighteenth. And so I guess we could just push everyone or push them back, I could talk to them. They were sitting here tonight to see, see what it was all about.
That was the.
Yeah, and it's another dwelling and another forty acres.
She tentatively told him the fourth.
Yeah.
I'm flexible, doesn't matter to me.
How would that correspond to the Board of Commissioners as far as?
It would work out in the fourth, and I guess I don't know about the eighteenth. There must only be four, are there only four weeks in November? I think so, or so you have, it wouldn't be able to get in until probably the first in December. Oh, so, well then we don't have, you don't meet on the fifth, if there's not one. But they, would they be able to meet on the fourth? Or is that where? Are you shocking? In November. Or is it November? Like the fourth Tuesday, the twenty-third.
We won't meet the fifth Tuesday. We don't have meetings at that one, so. The first four in October, four Tuesdays.
What's the work group, is that on the third week? So I think we could do the, I think that would work really good.
That'd make December less busy in case a bunch of stuff came in in November.
If we waited until the eighteenth.
Does that work for everybody, you think? It's kind of arbitrary, it's for one day, it's the same as another.
That's true, I can check with them, I don't know that they were looking to move forward this fall by any means, so I don't know that that would matter.
If you do it on the eighteenth, then we have workshop the next week, we want to get it approved very last week of the month. I don't, it's up to you guys.
So you wouldn't get it approved in November anyway, you're saying?
Yeah, and actually, the first in December is AMC, so we wouldn't go to full board until December fourteenth, possibly. If we had it the eighteenth of November.
If they're looking at breaking ground or something, that's a critical time from November fourth to December fifteenth as far as.
Yeah.
Freezing.
Maybe she'll turn to that fourth, huh?
I'm thinking if he's going, if they're going to break ground, they're wanting, going to want.
Because they're already, they already applied, nobody else did, so we probably should honor these guys instead of rebought somebody that lied. Yeah, that's a good point.
These people are here looking for a date and I think we should let them have it, what do you guys think?
I think that's right.
I mean, we start getting later, then we're going to be in a workshop and then like I say, it's, weather is going to be very contingent here in the next six to eight weeks.
Yeah. So it's the fourth?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Because then we could get it approved the next week. I mean, we go. We can have the workshop, then it's going to be the other month, so. We'll try to get him in so we can okay another second meeting of the month.
Okay.
If it works.
For us.
And no news on the study committees or anything like that?
Um, no, I have, I've been swamped with everybody's last minute calls. Permits, I haven't had a chance to look into that. I think, well, a little bit I've talked with commissioners, we'll just maybe look at this fall, putting that back together and moving forward on land use stuff.
Sure.
And then maybe we'll have a little bit more guidance or another body in the office to that.
Right now, we're looking for somebody to guide us through this, now we're setting up the right way. And that's kind of been the whole up right now.
Yeah, and I, I think you guys had gone off to, you submitted a proposal to actually have somebody write it and that didn't go through the first time, but I think they're maybe looking at redoing that too, is that weird?
Yeah, we're thinking about finding a, getting hired to consulting to help us get us our ordinances and our land use all back into.
Yeah.
Don't wallack.
So.
The land use and ordinance just kind of all work together, so I mean, we gotta do the wall.
Yeah, true.
So. It's going to take a while when you have to try to get townships.
I mean, we want to get every township involved. I mean, that's.
That's the most important thing there.
So I mean, this probably is going to be something that we might not even get started till mid winter, you know, until we can find the right guy. As soon as a guy in Fillmore County that's supposed to be pretty damn good at it and he's done some plans over there in Winona and they really like it, so we're working that way to see if we can get him to come here and help us.
I think time spent figuring it out to make it smoother is well spent. And if it takes a little bit, well, we could wait a while anyway.
Right, now it's better to do it right than get in a hurry.
If you look at the, the counties and that stuff, that things worked really good. When we set up, you know, for the locations, for all the addresses and everything, we went down to the. we went down to the one county right south of us here, and they had done just an excellent job. If we can figure out who's done it really good before and follow the lead, that's the best thing to do. Why reinvent the wheel? Yeah, we can't reinvent the wheel, just.
It's gonna probably be, invite somebody from that county to come up and have a, have a presentation.
And that, that's what we did for that zoning, for the, for marking the driveways and everything, and that worked perfect. Yeah, we did that 911 that time, we did seven, me and Glenn Miners, and then Olson. Olson is the one that did most of the work. And this is the best part about this, because Mike Olson was on the fire department, and he did 90% of the work for us, because he was, he was trying to get Winona County to help us to do it. Winona County never got it done, and when Houston County got finished, believe it or not, you guys, FedEx and UPS went to Winona County and said, whatever you do, do it like Houston County. And so they invited Mike Olson, me and Glenn Miners to come up there and speak. They showed us a half hour video of how it was done in Chicago, and all these township guys from Winona County were just looking at it. I was the first one to get up and speak, and I got up and I said, did any of you guys understand this? They all said no. I said, neither did I, but we're done. And you know what? We explained to them, you just gotta name your roads or streets, your number them, and let this GPS stuff, they'll figure out how to market and everything. They got it done within a year after that. You know? So if you find somebody that really knows how to do it, Mike Olson told me, he said he wouldn't miss that meeting for anything, because he was begging them to help them for years. Yep, and then he got to lead it up there, that was really good.
And you guys got all their science paperwork, y'all stayed.
And the neatest part about this, when this came down to the township level, we came in there and we asked people to come to the meetings, and it was really fun, because they started talking and they decided they wanted to name their roads and name all the signs. Everybody made the signs they wanted, and of course, we got them all in, got them all written down. And if somebody messed with one of those signs, these guys would come out and they would grease the signs up, so nobody could steal them. I mean, who would ever have thought of that? You know?
We're gonna install them.
Have you?
Yeah.
I did find the list of committee members, I think somebody asked about that last time, so I have found some of the information that you recalled, but when we get maybe further along in that process, well.
Those aren't set in stone either, I think that could all be revisited too, you know, as far as who was on them.
Yeah, it was, they didn't seem permanent by me, so.
One of the changes you're probably gonna see if you, next time you get a consultant to come in, because I was part of that when they did that Common Visions, and they want to have ag districts, they want to have hunting districts, they want to have recreational districts, and they want to make it so that the housing only goes in certain locations. And Ben, the bad part about that is, they were even talking 20 years ago, you guys, they were talking about getting their own police protection. You know? But that's, and the lady that wrote that book up there, she wrote a book on it, it's over at the office. But the lady that wrote the book, her name was Joan Nassar, and she lived in a gated community even then, and had her own police protection. So that's where the state is kind of aiming this at. Yeah.
Well, we're still living here.
Yeah, I know.
One, one thing that I think maybe we could kind of take a look at as a board sometime is water use. That came up a little bit tonight, they kind of wondered about that. When I was out visiting Joe in Phoenix here a couple of years ago, there was a article in the paper, Saudi ravens are coming in, drilling wells, there's no regulation, and they're going out for alpha. They just went down, you know, empty wells, and there was no way they could stop them. And it's something maybe we should think about, because, you know, this doesn't mean that it can't happen here. You know, somebody come in and put in a huge well, or Nestle come in and want to get water, you know?
90% of our trouble in the future now is gonna be good water. You go to South Dakota, they're pumping all the water to the cities now. In South Dakota, I went down and seen a tiki boy that used to live over here in the Crescent. He has a dairy where he bottles milk and everything, he has to get his water down there, it's below Iowa City. They have to pump it from the city now. They can't use the groundwater down there. Because? It's got that much, you know.
Chemicals on it.
Too much nitrate.
Well, I know, like cooked dairy, they, they gotta pay for water after a certain amount they use.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are DNR water appropriations permits. So if you pull a certain amount, a year, I think is how it's based, or so much per day, more than like 10 days of the year, then you have to file that permit with the DNR, and then I'm just, I guess, I'm guessing there's like a lot of record keeping paperwork to go with that.
So we're probably further ahead and ready than some of those western states.
And they all nail that down in the feedlot committees. And I was to the meetings, the feedlot meetings in Rushford, and they said, in the future, we will all be paying for water. And basically, that's what our future is gonna be now. So we have to pay for the well and water? Well. You guys, if you keep up on this, there was a time when the state of Minnesota put a rule and regulation in that if you pump water out of your well, right directly to a creek, you were polluting. This is no kidding. We, we watched that, and, and then the judge threw it out, but that's, that's how tight they're making some of these regulations. You know? There was a kid named Jeff Broberg brought that up at a meeting one time, and you know, that judge said, that's true, he says, if that's true, you can't do that.
So like on a farm, like some of them farms got four wells, how do they regulate? Do they have a meter on every well, or is it the main?
Well, basically what they're doing now is they're counting how many cattle you have. They're assuming that they drink so many gallons per day and you just pay that fee. If you go out in Nebraska, Nebraska, when you buy a farm in Nebraska, they can tell you exactly how many cattle you can have on that farm, because they, they know exactly how many gallons that that well can produce per day. You know? That's how important it is in the, in the other states right now.
Well, it's coming here too.
It's far away here, I don't think.
Shall we adjourn this meeting, or what are we doing?
I don't have anything.
You guys take a note then?
I'll make that motion. Second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I wasn't curious.